Meeting's called to order. The Running Board of Education meeting is called to order. Board of Education is in compliance with Chapter 231 of the Public Walls of 1975 entitled the Oakland Public Meetings Act. The time, date, and location of this meeting was appropriately advertised by notifying the retrospect as well as posting notices in the Borough Hall, Runway Post Office, Mary Road School, Alliance Bingham School, Grace Sailing School, and the Runway Public School District website. Please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance. I'm sorry. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, board members.
Ms. Dare.
Here.
Ms. Beebe.
Here.
Ms. Davidson.
Here.
Ms. Farrell.
Here.
Mr. Murray.
Here.
Ms. O'Brien.
Here.
Ms. Penzerell.
Here.
Ms. Sims.
Here.
Ms. Walden.
Here.
We have four.
Also present, Mark Ngocchi, Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Sean McCarron, Business Administrator and Director of Curricular Instruction, Miss Shad Yezzi, Principal of Bingham and Downing Schools, Mr. Steve Peely, Principal of Holt School, Mr. Steve Maloney, Vice Principal of Holt School, Mrs. Gladys Hubbard, Director of Special Education, and Mr. Frank Heinz, Supervisor of Building and Grounds. At this time, I need a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from September 21st.
Motion.
Motion made by Maria, seconded by Patty. Any questions on the meeting? No questions, roll call.
Ms. Dare.
Yes.
Ms. Beebe.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
Staying.
Ms. Farrell.
Upstate.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. O'Brien.
Yes.
Ms. Penzerell.
Yes.
Ms. Sims.
Yes.
Ms. Walden.
Yes.
Motion passes.
At this time, we are going to have our NJSLA Star Strong Star Benchmark Test Core presentation.
Okay, so I will be presenting the results for the NJSLA, which was given last spring. As you remember, last year was a hybrid year of learning. Also, we were waiting till the very end to find out whether or not we would be giving this assessment. So, we're going back to everything being normal in terms of presentations, in terms of presenting all that information and data. In August, we found out that all school districts in the state of New Jersey were required to give Star Strong assessment again, which we didn't think we were going to have to give since we had just given the NJSLA in the spring. However, we did give both assessments at this time, so that's what I'll be presenting on today. For NJSLA, first administration of the assessment since spring 2019, first time for third through fifth grade students to take the assessment. The district has not provided access to test questions with this assessment, student work or student answers. The district has provided standard performance for each grade level and grade level performance on standards. Students in the same grade level could have had various forms and varying questions of the test. That varies because there are multiple forms of each test that's given. Students took ELA and math in grades three to eight as well as science in grades five to eight. Students enrolled in Algebra I do not take the grade eight math, they take the algebra test. Star Strong was administered, so NJSLA was administered in the spring. Back in May, Star Strong was administered the third week of September. Teachers have access to see test questions and student responses following the test administration. Students took the test in ELA and math, grades four to eight, as well as science in grade six, the assessments based on the previous year's standards. So, students in grade four took the Star Strong assessment. Star Strong was measured on the third grade standards, and for that assessment, for both math and language arts, it ranges from 10 to 15 questions in each subject area. Just to give you an idea, for NJSLA, the performance levels range anywhere from 650 to 800 for ELA and math in grades three to eight. There are five performance levels. And then, for science, that's just an overview of the science scores from 100 to 300. Today, we'll be presenting on the ELA and math. For language arts, you can see here for what was administered, grades three through eight, it gives you a breakdown for the five levels, did not meet, partially met, approached, met expectations, and exceeded expectations. As a district, it was a little bit over 34, it was 34.2% proficiency in language arts across the district, and that's the grade level breakdown there. In mathematics, you can see over here, the breakdown across the district, as far as did not meet, partially met, approached, met, and exceeded. Overall, it was about 18, it was 18.7% proficiency across the district in math, and that will be something that I focus on as we move forward in our conversations this evening. For Star Strong, you can see, when you do the comparison, they don't always match up perfectly, so less important needed would be those students who mastered or showed proficiency within the grade level content. So, you can see here where students fell, for seventh grade, based on sixth grade, eighth grade standards, based on seventh, and down below, you will see that the science scores are there because they are provided immediately. Language arts is on the left-hand side, mathematics is on the right. The final one that I have here is the Star Benchmark Assessment. The Star Assessment is our benchmarking assessment that we use within the district. Different districts use different assessments. Some use math, some use Renaissance Learning, which is the Star Assessment. That is a fall-to-spring assessment that is given. We actually give it three times to all of our students, fall, winter, spring. For our students who receive interventions, they take that assessment a total of five times. Between, they take it in addition to the fall, winter, spring, they also take it between fall and winter, they take it again between winter and spring. So, that way, it's about every eight to 10 weeks that they are taking that assessment, so we're able to track their progress and growth, and that can show you from start of the year where they started to the end of the year where they ended. From here, you're seeing the scores that you see for each grade, the first number represents the grade level where the student is, so 3.0 would be third grade level. Anything past the decimal point is month, so 3.2 would be third grade, second month. 5.8 would be fifth grade, eighth month. So, you can see here for language arts, it ranges between eight months' growth to one year, two months' growth at different grade levels. It is given, the start one is given in the middle of September, the end one is given in the middle of May. So, it's about eight months total that you're looking at in terms of students, student instruction taking place. Cycles of analysis, for state assessments, we have the NJSLA, Star Strong, access, which is for our ASL population, DLM, which replaced API, that's our Dynamic Learning Map for our Special Ed population who isn't able to take the NJSLA. We have our district data benchmarks, our Star Assessment, and FMP Benchmarking, which is given in the lower grades, K to five. Classroom assessments, we have classwork, proficiency scales, root breaks, assessments from our programs, teacher observations, and our RTI progress monitoring. Other considerations that we always take into place is attendance, INRS, 504, IEPs, other needs, and parent feedback. So, once again, the NJSLA, Star Strong, and the Star Assessment are all pieces that we look at in trying to identify students' needs and identify where we need to go in terms of moving students forward. Things to consider are trends by subject and grade. One of the things that we will look at, the grade level that the NJSLA does provide, are evidence statements. That gives us a breakdown of standards and where students were strong, and then also what standards students struggled on with the NJSLA. From there, what we're able to do is we're able to look at sample questions to see what types of questions students are asked in those areas, when is that standard taught or addressed within the subject area, and how can we better meet the needs of those standards with our students that we have. Professional development goals by grade level and subject area, and then I just described the evidence statements. The finals, student supports, which that we have in place, which would be INRS process or RTI support, differentiated instruction targeted to specific standards and students, after-school and summer programming, and then also child study team supports. And that's the full cycle in terms of what we look at and the cycle that we continue to go through to assess our students and see where they are. Next steps, we do have a math coach to support our math teachers and intervention specialists across the district in mathematics. We did not have intervention specialists across the district, so we now have a four, five intervention specialist for math and a sixth through eighth grade intervention specialist for math on top of the math coach that we have that works across all three buildings. We'll be utilizing our intervention specialists to support students and teachers in the classroom and also pulling those students who need additional support out of the classroom for that additional help. We will continue to utilize, because don't forget, last year was the first year that we had our literacy program that our teachers were starting to implement, that our literacy consultant come in. Last year was a difficult year to implement a brand-new reading program in K to five. That literacy consultant will be coming in to support teachers again this year, not as many times as she had come in last year. Math consultant will come in, we had a math consultant come in to work with our teachers, and we saw, we received a lot of good feedback from our teachers through observations, walkthroughs, and their feedback from that working that they had. That, I want to say that was about five years ago that we had that math consultant come in, so we're going to be bringing a math consultant back in to work with our middle school math teachers, best practices, and model lessons within the classroom. Also, we will implement and evaluate the INRS process, tiered supports drive student growth and achievement. We'll utilize the evidence statements to drive conversations regarding instructional practices and standard mapping, and we will review test administration practices moving forward. Where are students tested, who's testing students, are students being tested by their grade level, their content area teacher, or are they being tested in the same homeroom? Those are all conversations that have already started happening that we will continue to have throughout the year. Any questions?
Can you go back two slides? Or a slide, yeah, another slide. Is it common to start the fall? That's an average, right?
Average for the grade level.
For a regular kid?
So, you think all the students have the average grade level where they started?
Is it normal to be two, three grades behind?
It's not, it's not during the time where there's most of the time, and that's reasons and things like that. The page, we didn't see that below the starting point, that's what you mean.
That's exactly what I mean, so we don't expect to see that going forward considering this is going to be a full year.
Correct, that would be lower.
That just seems super loaded, man. Like...
Now, with that being said, also, remember, when you administer the Star Assessment with students, correct?
Correct.
So, when you administer that Star Assessment, when the students take it, many times...
I believe some of these kids were taking it at home, I'm sure, right, last year?
Because it was a hybrid set, correct?
Yes.
So, when you're taking that assessment, many times it's pushing directly, it's are you reading all the questions completely? And it's one of those things that as soon as you get one question wrong, it changes your level and moves you down. I could give Samantha the assessment, and she could fall into a 4.8. I can then say you're taking it again, and she falls at a 6.2. It's an average basis, and it's one measure of growth that we look at.
Are they letting it timeout? Like, I know this, that happens too, if they don't answer a certain amount of time, it just climbs down and they don't get credit for it.
I would say, for us, sometimes it's the opposite because it also tells us how long a student took to complete it.
Right, if they're not reading the part.
And the same thing was true for the Star Strong, so if they're answering 10 questions with Star Strong, and now with that, we can't go back on, and the answers were completed within one minute and 45 seconds, even though they're given 35 to 40 minutes to take it, and then they're done. With this, our teachers are able, and in some cases they do, we'll have them go back and say, okay, well, you know, like, as a teacher, many times if I saw a student lose growth from start to finish, I was going to be like, is there something I need to be aware of? Like, we lose knowledge in some way, shape, or form from the start of the year, we're going to retake this and we're going to try again. But for me, it's making sure that they are on point with what they're doing and encouraging them to try their best as they take it.
Any other questions for Dr. McCarron?
Do we have any numbers from any other districts?
I can get those numbers for you if you'd like.
Just to see if, you know, if they're in the same situation.
Every district's complaining, I'll be the first one to tell you, no, our scores are low. 100%, there's no question about that. I think it's been addressing it with the teachers and identifying how we can make sure that our students are, you know, maybe pushing, you know, we've had this conversation with the principals, and we've been talking about, like, do we push testing more? Do we push the, you know what I mean? But remember, this is one assessment that we give at the end of the school year that we don't have a baseline for NJSLA or Star Strong for.
A year out.
Besides what they give us, does that make sense?
Yeah.
We don't get to see those questions.
This time next year.
And then, once we get in that cycle, like, if you look at the testing that's taken place over the years, the state will change their testing based on what company they are using at any given time.
I mean, I think the growth is there, it's just the starting points are dropped, right? Is that how you're saying it, or am I looking at it wrong?
No, I think it's...
You know, you're getting eight months or higher above of growth, which is how long the instructional is, and the starting point has to...
They're starting three grade levels behind, and then that goes all, then they're starting behind, and then they're going...
The scores aren't low in all the other districts too, where I work, the score, they just had their meeting list, and the scores were very low across the district. They went down significantly.
Yeah. Which was expected of a fourth grade year.
Right.
Mm-hmm. That's not, that's not the excuse we need to do another job.
Well, yeah, because it's literally one, it's, we're talking about five, we're talking about six grade levels.
Mm-hmm.
Third grade, third grade, I mean, that's a little bit, but like, the other grade levels, that's like alarming to me in every single hat that I wear in life. Barbie, I'm sorry, I asked you to be quiet just because they were having a conversation, and you were having a conversation, she just asked, when will we get this year's data? So, like, parents get this, like, you got your kids' star stuff throughout the year, your individual kids.
Right.
Parents already received their NJSLA data two weeks ago?
Right. But like, was our fall, this fall 2022, this far back?
This is fall 2020, this is last year, so like, that's our boys in grade...
So, not fall 2022, right, that's what I'm saying, fall 2022 is completed.
Oh, 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 are you...
I can pull the scores.
That's what she's asking you, I'm sorry.
Yes, I can pull the scores.
Didn't say we need...
Yes, absolutely, so I could get that information for the board and have that for the November board meeting, I can get to you before then, but I can also make sure everyone has that for that one.
Yes. How many times do you do this, Sean? The Star Assessment?
The Star Assessment's given to every student three times a year, it's given to students on intervention, tier two or tier three, which are the two other levels, that's given to them five times a year.
So, when's the third time? So, it's fall, spring, and what, I guess winter?
Fall, no, it's fall, winter, spring.
Fall, winter, spring for every kid.
For every kid.
Yes.
So, then, I guess we'll get, he'll send us the fall stats, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, we do winter, can we see winter stats too, of course?
Absolutely.
That will be, you see progress?
Yes.
Any other questions? No? Thank you. At this time, we have, we're open for public comments.
You didn't know anything else, I'm sorry.
No, I'm good. Public comments and agenda items only. No comments, so two presenters report.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, thanks for coming out tonight. Just a couple things for the month of October. District enrollment actually is up a little bit from last month, we increased our page students, which is always a positive sign, we've had some more time here as well, just specific grade levels, sorry to say, and then we don't want to add any more of that one class year on make it too big, but, so we're happy we increased the numbers, but again, hopefully that did increase. Last week, we did have, excuse me, two weeks ago, we had professional development day for our staff. Month of October, we used a lot of retraining, recertification for staff, CPR, CPI, ESI, don't ask my secret, I understand that, I can tell you in a second, and also some meetings that we have to have in terms of art by the state. I have character education committee that involves a very long time that day to go over some stuff that we do for the year. Also, we have GCM training for our support staff, so I think Mr. Maloney was in charge of that, so he has good people going through that GCM training, which is pretty comprehensive, and give the credit for that, so as we move on. And Dr. McCarron said we did have Star Strong and a data review during those times as well to break out some of those numbers, and we wrote off during that following Monday. District events, counselors and principals and staff did a great job with Week of Respect, things we've had time to do, stressing other things, staying on as well, so we appreciate all their efforts for that. October, September's also a big submission to the state and county. We had the school safety and security plan submitted, the remote and virtual plan, even though we don't have the remote and virtual option at this time, so we'll submit one. Statement of shorts for our professionals to ensure that we're doing that correctly, submitted to county office. New Jersey's smart snapshot, which is basically just not to say, submitted on Friday. I thank our technology department, our office staff, our curriculum department, every other department, that's a pretty comprehensive thing to do. Can I have any errors, right, Dr. McCarron, before you submit that, where they stop the list? But everything else feels good, they did a great job collaborating with that, and Dr. McCarron ensures that people are cross-trained to do different things, so they kind of, oh, you missed this, you missed that, and they did a great job. It is, they're happy it's over, because it's pretty comprehensive. Today, a part of the Downing, I want to just thank the PTA for the fun run today, to get an opportunity to go out and put this down, I know there's some pictures already up, I believe, the kids that I saw, the kindergarten kids were always great, there's not much falling in the cones, they're trying to jump over, but the haystacks, but it was fun, I did see your daughter out there, so helped me out, so, yeah, great job, she was thrilled to be there, she did, I'm not lying, she definitely had a great time. So, thank you for that, because that was a great job. I know you guys also raised seventeen?
I think we're, yeah, we're like $100 short from raising $18,000.
Wow. Yeah.
That's amazing.
And really...
If you can't get that, Dr. McCarron and I will greatly donate to that tomorrow.
Okay.
Get the bill before midnight.
Tonight, at midnight.
I have the bill... Sure, then, but, wait, is it Venmo or Skins sometimes?
No, you're going online, I'll send you the link.
It's an actual website we use, yep.
The web website, I still understand Venmo. Ms. Barker's going to explain to me one of that.
Yeah, it's not Venmo.
The PTA is also doing a sneaker drive.
Yes.
Okay, likely used or...
So, it can be any likely used sneakers or fleets, and then we're doing that until October 31st, we've already had to pick up because some of our boxes were full, and then what we do with that is we are sending them, there's this company, it's called GetSneakers.com, I think, and what they'll do is they'll take the sneakers, they resell them at a lower price, but then we get a portion of that, any sneakers that can't be resold, instead of going to the landfill, they recycle them into recycled products.
I do want to thank you for all your efforts since today, it's fun to see the kids and have a great time.
Oh, yeah.
Just passing along our thanks to everyone that participated. Also coming up, red ribbon wheat, I can say that's slow as well, I believe it's next week, I believe the principal will put that information out, so make sure your kids are pressed to boiling for those things, and hopefully the Phillies and the Eagles will do well, so you can see that stuff as well. I know Volt's Pink Day coming up as well, that district, my opinion, which is 2027. And then, our next board meeting is scheduled for November 16th, might possibly do it at a different location, just have to check, I know we had some hiccups of venom and some rain, so we'll do it a rainy day, and we're dodging raindrops, right, so we'll see.
That's an attempt, the kids can do it, we can do that.
Absolutely. But again, thank you for coming out, and if you have any questions, now the free time. No fillings?
Not right now.
Not good. No.
Probably not.
I heard.
All right. No questions for Mark, then we'll move on to Sean's report.
Okay, so curriculum-wise, preparing test scores that we did receive to go out to teachers so that way we can have those conversations, reviewing evidence statements. As Mr. Ngocchi said, we did have the PD day, so we were able to have a lot of conversations that day, in addition to making sure that the mandated train is by the state that has to be completed by a certain timeframe, we're completing. We are now preparing for DLM testing, which is our special education testing. The state felt like general education students were given the opportunity to take the Star Strong assessment, so they think that the Special Ed students should be given the opportunity to take the DLM assessment in the fall and the spring also. So, now, teachers have to be trained in that assessment because we do have new staff members in those positions, and then that has to be given before December. We finalized all testing for Star Strong and made sure that that was submitted to the state correctly. I've participated in county meetings and state trainings. All of the final reports for 2122 for like our federal grants are due at this time, so all of those have been submitted in terms of how money was expended and spent. As Mr. Ngocchi said, our October 15 poll is a huge piece that involves special education, it involves outside districts, if we send students to outside districts, and making sure everyone, every student is in our system correctly. So, it's that data in, data out piece, and making sure that everyone's marked correctly because that's then how, when we get our budget numbers, those numbers come from. And then, that drives our student roster, that will be our ASSA poll, which is due by November 15th, and making sure that all of those students are listed correctly, and then we do get the funding for those students, homeless, displaced, DCT and paid, all of those students in those different categories. So, as Mr. Ngocchi said, it has been a busy run, however, everything's going well, so let's go ahead.
Any questions for Dr. McCarron? How about principals' reports?
[laughter]
Seven, four?
What is this? Look at these are... It's twisted.
All right, district reports, principals' reports, nurses, building and ground, Special Ed, they were all attached, any, all the reports are back, any questions there? No? Okay. Then, I promised Sam last night that I would tell her, give her a minute, in case you don't know, that is Sam, she's our PTA representative that's going to come to the board meetings.
Yes. So, we had our fun run today, the kids loved it, it was great, we saw an obstacle course at Downing and Bingham, they did it for 15 minutes. We got little bracelets for every time they went around, they thought that was the coolest thing, so now it was like a collective bracelet. But they had a great time, we did snack after, we got pictures of every class, so that was cool, two of the teachers liked it. We do have dine and donate coming up this Monday at Irish Hill Tavern, I believe that's from five to eight, and the Flyers should have gone home today or tomorrow for the kids, and Flyers for designed by Bingo will be going out, that's on November 18th, Friday, right here at Holt's. So, tickets will start going on sale for that next week or two. And then, the sneaker drive that we're doing, we didn't have specifically any proceeds we're getting from that sneaker drive. We did move the eighth grade dance outside of Lee School this year to a venue, so any money raised from, yeah, anybody, raised from that sneaker drive will specifically go to yours that eighth grade event.
Awesome.
Could you just do me a favor and make sure you email the principals or myself again so we can plan that step out?
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
I know you guys did a good job.
Yeah, I was going to say, and you guys are awesome, we get stuff out of campus.
Yes, the Irish Hill Tavern.
Donate, 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 it's fine to eat at Irish Hill Tavern.
So, most of us will be away at a convention, but, but make sure you keep us posted every month because I know we've been trying to help local establishments as well.
Yeah, I don't think we have November planned yet, but our meeting's on the second, so as soon as we know that, we'll post that too and let you guys know.
Awesome. And congratulations again, that was a huge hit, that fun run.
We are...
A lot of the parents, and you guys were flooding social media, and obviously worked, so, great job.
We got a lot of feedback too, a lot of families, like grandparents and stuff that aren't local, that can't really do the fundraisers where you buy pie or something like that, they were excited to be able to get to contribute, so, kind of cool.
Yes, awesome, thanks again. Any other committee reports at this time? We have the NJFBA convention next week, and most of us are attending. Anything else?
I believe the delegate assembly will be in November, if anyone needs to get their sites in. I don't have the exact date, I apologize.
I guess we'll find out probably, yeah. If you guys, if the newer board members did want to go to that and carpool together, it is definitely, it's a Saturday morning, but it is very interesting.
All day.
All day. Oh, it's all day?
It's all day.
Oh, no, it's until noon.
Until noon, I'm sorry.
I was there way past noon.
You were talking.
Try not to... I don't know how many questions there are.
Oh, yes, yes, you're right, Maria, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you're right, and people[1711.01] You're right, and people keep asking questions about the thing, it's like
Sweetie, shut up.
Listen, yes, yes, because it literally is, I remember as a child going to like Trenton and seeing like how things work for like Washington DC, but like, that's literally how it is. It's like, it's like a congress meeting there. So it's definitely, it's definitely interesting.
Oh, it's hard.
So, yeah, so you can, you can go longer, I apologize, but it is, it is definitely a learning experience. And Dr. McCarron gave us all a list of things that, different trainings that you will, can attend next week, you know, you can do whatever you want. He also went through and highlighted, why did you highlight two, three?
Those are just governance training.
Oh, okay, all right. Like governance, like any mandated training, it's a great time to do it.
You only go to those if you're required to, which is why they're highlighted. And on the back of that sheet is a list of how you earn your certifications as a board member, and then attached to that is each of your transcripts for what you've already taken. The top one is only for new. You'll get it, but you'll just get
Yeah, make sure you
Yeah, your badge. Where is the registration?
That, just you, you put your name and then you put your name and then
Oh, that's right, that's right, okay. I will be in contact, I'll be in contact with everyone this weekend, just so we can not hold everybody up because it's here. So we'll move along to new business then. Under Property and Transportation, I need a motion to approve item numbers one and two. Motion made by Maria.
Second.
Seconded by Naomi. Any questions? I'm just so excited to see all of these things back, it almost looks semi-normal, yes. Roll call.
Ms. Dare.
Yes.
Ms. Beebe.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
Yes.
Ms. Farrell.
Yes.
Ms. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. O'Brien.
Yes.
Ms. Panzarella.
Yes.
Ms. Sands.
Yes.
Ms. Spalding.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Under Personnel, motion items number one to five, looks like four and five were then.
I'll make that motion by response to five.
Motion made by Angel. Seconded by Patty. Any questions? Roll call.
Ms. Dare.
Yes.
Ms. Beebe.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
Yes.
Ms. Farrell.
Yes.
Ms. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. O'Brien.
Yes.
Ms. Panzarella.
Yes.
Ms. Sands.
Yes.
Ms. Spalding.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Under Finance, we need a motion to approve items numbers one through fifteen. Motion made by Angel.
Second.
Seconded by Naomi. Any questions? Roll call.
Ms. Dare.
Yes.
Ms. Beebe.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
Yes.
Ms. Farrell.
Yes.
Ms. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. O'Brien.
Yes.
Ms. Panzarella.
Yes.
Ms. Sands.
Yes.
Ms. Spalding.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Under Curriculum, approval for number one.
I'll make a motion to approve number one for curriculum.
Motion made by Patty. Seconded by Barbie. Roll call.
Ms. Dare.
Yes.
Ms. Beebe.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
Yes.
Ms. Farrell.
Yes.
Ms. Murray.
Yes.